It's six o'clock. Go ahead and get ready to work. Welcome to the House. Two, Hall Road to an established corps.
Chairman Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marston.
Here.
Three, Joe McNuffey. Appreciate you coming by. He's going to do a invocation. The number four pledge of allegiance will be Corey Frame. Thank you for your new dish of information.
That's great. Father, you tell us in First Timothy, Chapter two, "To pray for all those that are in authority, so that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness." And in a time that there is so much animosity in the society that we live in, we pray for peace. At a time when there's so much confusion in the world that we live in, we pray for wisdom. At a time when there's so much pride and we ask that we would live in humility, Lord, I ask your blessings upon this meeting tonight, on all the business that has transpired. What we do as you tell us to do, we pray for those that are in authority. We pray for our leadership. We thank you for them. We pray blessing over them. We pray blessing over their families. We pray blessing over this meeting. May everything that is said and done tonight bring honor and glory to you. But we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five, approval minutes at the end of 23rd and 22nd meeting. Proportions, expenditures, personal actions, payroll, requisitions, approve all generous entries to be posted. Mr. Chairman, I have my approval.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Number six, public comments or updates.
We have several people that have come and want to address the commission. And I hadn't, I didn't know that in the, that in the rules and the procedures that's adopted in 2005, they said that only two people could speak on one particular subject matter. So in order to define subject matter, I don't know, I don't know how we're going to define that. But anyway, there are several people here tonight that, a few of them had called me and asked me about coming to the meeting. And I said, yes, we have a public comment. And if you want to address something with the commission, that would be the time to do it. So they came up here and they want to address the commission. So my petition to the commission is, are you going to let?
Who wants to come first? Can you state your name, please?
Linda Tice.
Three minutes, ma'am.
My employment history has always involved working directly with people. Assisting others is something I find very rewarding and enjoyable. My hope was to continue serving others through cards. Unfortunately, the unwritten rules did not involve pleasantries, listening to customer concerns or complaints. I assume you should be grateful for their patience. From my first day, I had a sense of impending doom. I couldn't simply relax and learn because Ms. Eccles made me nervous. I understood why when she began to nitpick about some of those rules. Examples such as not bringing paperwork to her office or the necessity for screening her calls. One day, I was working on invoices. She scolded me for hesitating before answering the phone. My denial was dismissed. She admitted watching me from her desk. It's futile to defend yourself against her accusations. From that day forward, I was fearful of a reprimand if I failed to get every call. I had never worked for anyone who changed their rules and then lived so often. I became the target of her wrath. One day, she apologized for her behavior and thanked me for my contribution. She admitted she yells without thinking and reminded me of the heavy burden of her job as a legitimate reason. Friday, July the 8th, I was trying to help a customer schedule an outpatient procedure requiring an extra drop point. Ms. Eccles came to my desk and started a tirade of how my conversation was stressing her out. She said I should have transferred the call without telling the customer. Anyway, I can't be rude or hang up on people. If someone wants to complain, I listen and often in the option of speaking to a manager. They always decline because they know Joyce doesn't take customer calls. After about 20 minutes of humiliation from another public reprimand, my workday was completed, so I left. The totality of my situation resulted in the following. To Joyce Eccles, as a result of very high stress, I am resigning for health reasons. My blood pressure was always low until I started working for you. Now my doctor's concerned because it's so high. The itching skin I have been dealing with is caused by the constant anxiety of never knowing what your state of mind will be. I haven't been able to relax since the first day. I refuse to further subject myself to being yelled at and treated as if I'm nothing. I shouldn't have to go to a doctor for medication and treatment because my boss thinks it's acceptable to humiliate me in front of everyone within hearing distance. That kind of behavior is unacceptable to me. Linda Tice, 712.
Thank you so much.
Wade Hancock. I've noticed several articles in our local newspapers in the last few weeks that have the need for driving for cars. As a former driver, driver trainer, safety officer, rodeo coordinator, and several other duties at Carts, I wish to share my experiences and hope that it doesn't happen to someone else. The director was out of town on November 6th, 39th, 2021 and left me as the one in charge for the week. On Friday, the 19th, at approximately 3:00 p.m., an employee or driver brought his daily paperwork to their office to be processed. The employee that is tasked with this was busy at the time with another problem and couldn't take it. I asked the driver to bring it to me and I could take care of it. He replied that I could come and get it. I replied he was to bring it to me, at which time he threw his metal money box at me from a distance of around 10 to 12 feet. He immediately began an argument of how I had mistreated him. I have no idea what he was talking about and I told him he needed to leave. And he did. On Monday, the 22nd, I met with the director in her office and informed her what had happened. I had written up a county incident report and handed it to her. She told me she didn't have time to read and just tell her what happened. Upon hearing the details, she said she had talked to the driver. I told her that in this day of workplace violence that we all see in the news daily, I felt that he really needed to be suspended. As a driver trainer, a former school teacher and bus driver, I don't have to be liked, but I have to be respected to do my job. Again, her reply was all she could do was talk about it. I told her, well, I could not work if I could not expect to be respected. And I asked her to call me when she made a decision and I went home. Later in the day, she called, asked if I could meet the following Monday, the 29th, to discuss it. Sure. At the meeting, she informed me she could not do anything to the driver and then said she could not have an employee that told her what to do. At that point, I saw I wasn't going to be respected. I walked out. On Tuesday, the 30th, I went to HR to ask about the incident. I was told there was nothing to talk about because I had quit. I still find it hard to believe in this day of workplace violence that this incident was treated as if nothing. I find it also hard to understand why if a driver uses the new bus washing carts, they will be fined. But a driver can throw a metal money box at another employee and be okay. I ask the commission to take an in-depth look into the number of drivers and office employees that have left Carts in the last five years and find out why they left. I believe you'll discover the great majority of them will tell you they've never worked there again. Perhaps it is time the commission researched the reason that Carts has such a high turnover rate. And finally, why is Carts telling patrons that call in for rides, they don't go to Walmart North? Because they are taking people to Walmart North. I feel like the only consistent policy at Carts is its inconsistency in treatment of employees and patrons. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Limley. I've worked for Carts for 11-plus years. When an entire office gets told as she's pacing, when I find out who talked at the courthouse, heads will roll. That was the response Ms. Eccles gave to someone allegedly telling the courthouse she was dating one of her Carts employees. That was the first time I saw Ms. Eccles yelling. Another time, being told Monday in a meeting to call the nursing homes to require patrons to have escorts for their rides. And by Friday, being screamed at, "How dare you take it upon yourself to call the nursing homes when I never told you to call?" My thanks to Kelsey Cornelius, who saved my job when she told Ms. Eccles, "Yes, you did instruct Andrea to call." Then it's tears and an apology on Friday only to come in to a demotion on Monday. I was placed from dispatching into verification and told if I couldn't do that job right, I would be placed in a bus part-time. Why was I punished for actually doing my job? If you aren't part of Ms. Eccles' chosen employees, you are subjected to unfavorable treatment. Even the last Carts employee, Linda Tice, can affirm to that belittling of the employees and it's still happening. The conditions of working in that office had gotten so bad for me personally that I would have to go to the restroom from a tore-up system as soon as I arrived to work. The final straw for me was when I was berated in front of the IT, Steven Burgett, because I couldn't send a large email that Ms. Eccles wanted. She sent the email to me as a blank packet. After I filled it out and added attachments, it became too large to send back. Turns out, the county email wasn't capable and he had to send it to get a different email. Ms. Eccles attacked me by telling Mr. Burgett, "I apologize for Andrea not knowing how to do her job and you had to come do it for her." My final concern is for the lack of safety. On Thursday, February 18th, 2021, when Mr. Clemens decided all county employees were to stay home till 10:00 a.m. for snow and ice road safety, I still have proof on my phone that Ms. Eccles ordered us into work overriding the commissioner's decision. I notified a commissioner immediately because of this unsafe act. I asked, "When were we no longer considered county employees?" I was informed that Ms. Eccles allegedly said we had to roll early for dialysis. Funny how at that time, dialysis only ran Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and this was on a Thursday. Why did Ms. Eccles force her employees into work in unsafe conditions? I myself almost hit a guardrail coming in. Bottom line, the citizens of Coleman County need you to look into this to stop the high turnover rate. We also need to know when is safety going to be taken seriously and the mental abuse going to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Russell Spiegel. I'm here this evening to address a situation in our county that threatens the livelihood of a very vulnerable segment of our population. Most, probably all of us here tonight, have never been transportationally challenged. And until I started driving for Carts, I never realized or considered the depth of the problem. Driving for Carts really opened my eyes to these needs. I was employed with Carts for eight years and during that time, I witnessed again and again the plight of so many people who no longer have transportation available to go to the doctor, the drugstore, to get groceries, or any of the other necessities of life. At one time, these people could count on Carts to get them to their destinations. But lately, that's not the case. The reason given for this is that we don't have enough drivers. And the reason we don't have enough drivers is because Ms. Eccles keeps running them off with her ranting and unfair practices. Patrons today are calling Carts wishing to go shopping at Walmart North. But they're being told that they do not go to Walmart North. We just don't go there. But it's funny, we have a patron that goes there all the time. That's not the truth. We have one patron that gets to go to Walmart North and the reason for that is that he lives close. But a lot of patrons get picked up on shopping routes. They're picked up north, then they have to be driven right by Walmart North to be bused to Walmart South. Makes sense? I see so many situations that are unfair and these things need to be corrected. I've had patrons at Carts complain to me that they're unhappy with the changes that Carts has made and I've communicated to them that they need to call the office with a complaint. But they replied that the director will never talk to them. Seems that she is having her calls screened. I worked as a full-time driver at Carts and I tried my best to always present Carts in a good light. I got along well with the office staff, other drivers, and other daily patrons. But for some reason, I got on Ms. Eccles' bad side. That is, until she needed me to help set up for the rodeo or train a driver on the mobility device security or help with obstacle force training. But as soon as these assignments were over, it was brought back to Dr. Jekyll. I was approached at Walmart one day, offloading a patron, when a man approached me and asked me if Carts was hiring. I replied, "Yes, we are always looking for drivers." He asked me if Joyce was still there. I told him, "Yes." He replied, "I will never work for Carts as long as that blank is there." This is the reputation she has in our communities and it does not reflect well on Carts. I no longer work for Carts, but I still care for the patrons, drivers, and office staff that are still there. I had eight years to form great friendships with all of them, but sadly, I am no longer there. So my only recourse is to ask you, the Coleman County Commission, please look into this problem and take care of my friends. I will continue to care and worry about them forever.
Thank you.
I was hired at Carts in December 2021, assuming I'd be doing a service for Coleman County. I've had past experience with elderly and handicapped and enjoyed my position. Little did I know there was so much childish backstabbing by office personnel to the point of not enjoying my job anymore. I didn't know the business of Carts was so political and whose back are you scratching now? I received a good job sticker one week and next week I'm fired. The main object was not for the patrons and their well-being, but for who was in charge. I was asked to resign without any warning or prior written notice of any kind, only that we don't think you're qualified or, no, we don't think you're fit for the job. And one day, I had to change buses three times because the first one blew up, the second one wouldn't operate the lift, and the third one, the doors flew open when I keyed my mic. I had patrons on the bus each time. On each of these buses, one was a dialysis patient that was waiting to go home and because the lift wouldn't work, another driver stopped to help me. And because we were more concerned about the patron than Ms. Evans was, which was dispatcher, she was more concerned about her authority. I was fired and the other driver wasn't. I took verbal harassment from her the whole four months I was there. She tried to belittle me on the radio for all to hear. I could hear when she would call my number and I just went into a tizzy because I knew there was something she was going to harass me about. I could hear her whispering and I would call in to ask for directions about me. I was not trained in the office and several things I found out later. But she had started to train me and left me hanging. A lot of drivers are afraid of losing their jobs so they don't say anything. But I'm not the only one she talks to like that. She confessed to me that she was hateful to employees because of her health issues. And I'm talking about Ms. Evans. When I complained to Ms. Eccles, she told me that, yes, she was brazen, but she had to be to do a good job. Nobody can expect a good, long-listing employee's list with that attitude. I was allowed to be cussed at by another employee and everyone in the office heard it during my training course. Think about the second or third day I was there. I was there to learn in what I thought was a great service, what turned out to be all employees are not treated equal. And I brought this to your attention.
Yes, ma'am. I remember you coming up to speak to me.
My name is Carolyn Shannon. Approximately three years ago, I worked for Carts. I loved my job. I've been a professional driver for over 25 years. I've never had such harassment, lies, told that I wasn't good enough. But I will put my driving record against anyone in this state, any state trooper that has ever stopped me for a complete check on my vehicle, whatever I was driving, wished that they had more drivers like myself. So when she come to my house, Ms. Eccles came to my house after a run that I had with a senior group, she pulled up in my front yard. I went out. She proceeded to start screaming at me, told me that I disrespected everybody on that bus because I didn't leave them on the side of the highway. No, sir, I would not leave anybody on the side of the highway, not even a common criminal. That is not what a bus driver is. A bus driver takes care of their patrons, seats that they get where they need to go. I was harassed totally from day one because I knew what I was doing. I didn't have to have somebody to belittle me, put me down. As some of you well know, we came for you after she fired me. And we told you how she did, how she treated me at my home house. Instead of calling me to the office, she did it in front of my neighbors. She did it in front of my workers. She put me down even when I was sick. And at the time, I did not know I had cancer, but I was sick. I don't ask nobody for nothing, but I do ask for respect, especially for my profession that I have done for all these years. I ask it from my fellow employees that was with me through the first day when they came to me and told me how she was talking about me at the office, how she was going to get rid of me one way or the other. And she did not only do it to me, she's been doing it all along. I asked then, "The good old boy system? Since the mayor is Ms. Eccles' brother, does it come from his office to tell y'all to just push us aside?" I'm not one to be pushed aside, I'm sorry. And I wanted y'all to know that. And if I could, yes, I would go back, but not as long as she's there. She doesn't deserve her position. She's thrown her position out the window a long time ago. And y'all know it. And in your hearts, you know there should be something done. Not just because I got fired or not because these got fired, but the ones that's going to come, the ones that needs to fill that position at Carts. I understand there's at least 10 positions available at Carts. Why won't people come and do it? Ask them. If they hear anything that Ms. Eccles has to say about it, they're not for Carts. They're not going to take care of our seniors like myself. Sooner or later, I know I'll have to ride one. I hope not. But be who we voted y'all to be. Take care of all of us, even though we're not there any longer. But like I said, some of us would like to be. I, for one, would give up my job tomorrow. I drive a 60-foot charter bus right now, part-time, 18-wheeler driver. I thank you for letting me ram along.
Can I ask you a question, ma'am?
Yes.
You said this happened three years ago.
Somewhere across the nation.
Do you know who you complained to? Because I wouldn't hear that.
To the commissioner. I went to, first, I went to my safety, gentlemen. I came up here. Then I came, Mr. Marston, do you remember?
You talked to me, yes, ma'am. You talked to me.
And told them how she was treating us, that we weren't something that you can kick on the ground. And we begged for, I mean, I begged for my jobs. I didn't ask nobody else to, but I did beg for mine because I had become to love the people that I was around. My workers, while long were standing beside me. And I tried to get along with Ms. Eccles. She wasn't having it. She was not having it. I talked to the safety director. I told him, I said, "You know I've never had an accident. The people love me and I can pat myself on the back because I love people. I could stand here and talk to you all day long and just enjoy every moment of it. I would beg for their jobs, these people's jobs, if they worked for the county." That's what I did. I begged. But I won't beg anymore because it's wrong. It is so wrong. I sent a gentleman, was my favorite at Hansville Senior. And I'm sure y'all won't want me to bring it up, but I'm going to anyway. You told me, you asked me, I will tell you. He rode on my bus many times, hot, cold, it didn't matter. But for, to be ordered, Ms. Eccles ordered that bus driver to put him out at the doctor's office and below zero weather. He took pneumonia several days later and died. Won't that happen again? Not to any of our people in Coleman County? Not nobody?[1681.03] Not nobody. It doesn't matter what color they are, doesn't matter who they are, black, white, men, women, bring it all in. But I don't want that to happen to nobody else. And it will as long as she runs Carts because she's done running down into the ground. How much fun do you want her to take it? And I thank you.
Thank you ma'am.
I'm Donna Marcella, I was here about three years ago. Do you remember me? But there's about ten of us here that spans several, several years. And I can testify to when Ms. Eccles told us if we had came to the Commissioner and talked about anything, that heads would roll. I can testify how her and Gary Campbell sat in the chairs and plotted how to fire Carolyn. I can testify that. And like I said in 2018, you can read the minutes, how she cheated on the rodeo test because the person who came in first place, she didn't like at that time, so she changed the test course. And it may not be against law, like I said then, but it's highly unethical. And I can testify how people in the county know her reputation, people in other counties, I can testify know her reputation for what she does when she goes out to the Orange County of Florida, what she does there, I think we've talked about that before. And so with ten of us standing here spending all these years, I hope you can tell somebody something, that something needs to change, not only for the drivers, but for the patrons.
Thank you ma'am.
I'm Trace the Givens, and I worked for the county for almost seventeen years, college for over eleven years. And back last year, I started having some back issues. And I went to Ms. Eccles about it, rejoiced about it, and I told her that my back was getting bad and things didn't change, that I was going to have to go on disability. And she informed me that we didn't have light duty. But I had been in the office before, and we had two male drivers that she told them not to put wheelchairs on because one of them had back issues and one of them was sick. And there's people here that can testify that she told them that, and I heard her say it also. And we had one passenger at Walmart that was helping another passenger load her groceries on the bus, and the same passenger that Wade was talking about that threw the metal box at him, grabbed the passenger by the arm and shook him, and informed him not to help with the groceries, that he would do that. And that's what they do, they help each other. They always help. And the only reason it was not reported was because he would be, he was afraid he'd be retaliated against, and he wouldn't get to ride the bus anymore. And that's the only way he has to go get his groceries and stuff. And another thing is wheelchairs. Some people in wheelchairs, we are allowed to push them and some are not. Some people are allowed to wait on and some are not. And we have to call the office to get permission on them to wait on and him not to wait on. So it all comes from the office. Whatever we do, it all comes from the office. Thank you.
Anyone else here? Do we have any other public commentings? We'll move on to number five, U Business. A recognition, Breanna Arnold and Connor Carter, named by National High School Anglers All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. D, recognition, double domed lane, thirty-one years volunteering for Sportsman's Lake, Wildflower Card.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I want to tell y'all, we're kind of sad to lose Ms. Moon after thirty-one years, but she deserved it and.
Retired.
Yeah, she's retired thirty-one years, and so we've got her something here we want her to take home.
Chair, with her family, this is in our deepest appreciation, we give our honor. This has been thirty-one years of dedicated service to Sportsman's Lake, Wildflower Garden. We've got that, we've got.
We've got a sign that Randall won't hang up there, it's hard to get somebody to volunteer thirty-one minutes, let alone thirty-one years.
I've seen her up there before. Circle time, yeah.
I just want to thank these people for being there to help me. I could not do all this without them. First brood, and we've had them all the years. We had people, we've met wonderful people, all of them stay down there, especially North Alabama. And it's been a joy. I miss it, but you get there sometimes. It's too hard to do. Thank you very much.
There you go.
All right, you go for it, it's a picture.
Here's your picture.
There we go. There was one, two, three.
Are y'all putting the sign up by the wildflower?
Yes ma'am, yeah, Randall put it up tomorrow.
Okay. Well, I was going to say holler at me when you get it up, but I'm going to take.
Yeah, we'll wait some time.
Thank you. My neighbor.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pased. C, Resolution 2022-58, authorize County to join the state, Alamo Land and other local governments as participants in current and future open road settlement. authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
I can speak to it. As if you were Cole Gainer, St. John actually represented the county and the city of the this Oklahoma case, she cannot be with us tonight, she had a different meeting, she said that's him. This is simply giving authorization for the chairman to sign. They've made two other settlements with two other companies. I'm sure there will be more to come. As of where I would mean, St. John did not have the exact figures, but we need to get the settlement paperwork in to the state about the August 1st. It was my recommendation. The county can start for two, laws, costs due to the open road epidemic.
Make motion to approve out of C.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. D, Resolution 2022-58, tax payment for project due in the amount of five hundred. Bring it now.
Good evening. So this is a project we are competing for, it would be just under ten million dollars capital investment, nine point nine roughly. Like you said, the tax payment book for it would be about half a million dollars over ten years. That same project that was going to create three hundred and forty thousand for our schools over that same time period, and also create fifty jobs with wages of twenty dollars and higher. This is a project, we, like I said, we compete with two out-of-state sites for this project. It's very advanced technology, it'd be something to be real proud of. It'd actually be one of six companies on our continent that would have the technology that would agree to it.
Mr. John, make a motion to approve out of B.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. Thank you, Stan.
Thank you.
D, Resolution 2022-61, request approval for airport to apply for an FAA grant funded to design and perform environmental investigation of airport property or development.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, the FAA has authorized AIG portion of VIL, which is their wonderful grant, F and M. What that means is the FAA has the bipartisan infrastructure law. Within the bipartisan infrastructure law that came out this year, there is what's called AIG portion of that, that's the airport infrastructure grant. Our airport fell in the category of two hundred ninety-five thousand per year for that grant. Currently, this year, that is a ninety-ten grant. The state was not prepared for that, so the state will not participate this year, they'll look at participating next year. We anticipate the first portion, we've identified twenty acres that we're trying to develop over a five-year period, so we're able to get two ninety-five for five years. We anticipate this grant will be less than two hundred thousand this year for the design and environmental. That would be ten thousand to the city, ten thousand to the county once everything triples down. So what I'm asking you all for tonight is simply the ability to go out for the pre-application, and then we'll get the free IP and let the FAA come back and see what all we're able to do with this particular grant. And then next year going forward, this will be a building block for the rest of the four years remaining on the grant.
Is that just for the environmental study?
So this is the design and environmental. We'll take the design and the environmental as far as we can until we exhaust the money. And then next year, we'll build on that and take it as far as we can until we exhaust the money. For the next, it's a five-year process, so we have two ninety-five per year to exhaust that money, we go as far as we can.
Make motion to approve out of B. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. Thank you, Van.
Thank you all very much.
L, Resolution 2022-61, authorize the operation of metal or canvas dispensing site within unincorporated areas of the county, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of E.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. G, authorize Revenue Commissioner Barry Whittingham to sign Fran Junior Agreement for Deco McKennan Revenue Office.
Make motion to approve out of G. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. H, authorize the chairman to engineer the signing of the mild application submitted by Zellwood Phillips to about County Route Fifty-seven.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is just to authorize the posting of the signs for these County Route Fifty-seven, and also going forward, we'd like to be able to have this to where we could actually just permit these from the county, from the county road department office, or an engineering staff would be able to approve these, it's just permits. I actually spoke with a Powell representative, and they said that would be acceptable if we were just okaying that at some point.
Without going through permission?
Yeah, without it going through, because sometimes we'll get seven or eight of these at a time, and posting all these on a commission meeting, we would be, so for us, we're committed to approve these as permits through the road department.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve out of H, for the addition of the condemned that Malamis were given to the engineer.
Yeah, let the engineer approve. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I consider extending the lease agreement for two months for Warrior Tractor for 2019 John Deere Six Twenty-four XLT Twelve Loader for the road department until October 24th, 2022, in the amount of two thousand five hundred and sixty-nine fifty-five. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Shane Bailey has worked on this to get it in place. We're currently leasing this piece of equipment, we can buy it at a substantial discount, but we need to wait till the next budget. And so leasing it, extending the lease for two additional months will bridge that gap so we can purchase this out of it. Is that twenty-five sixty-nine per month, or is that total? That would be per month. Per month, yes. Sixty-nine fifty-five per month. And then we would be able to buy that, do you remember the discount lease for it, thirty-nine hundred and fifty? This is a substantial discount. Make motion to approve out of I.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pased. J, consider approval of the previous excess plan for county roads associated with Rock to South, pending agreement with the county to cover any potential damage to the roads, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of J.
I'm still a little unclear about, so we're approving last year's excess plan?
That's my understanding, yes, I see.
With the KBI, or with the added that we're amending the way that we hold bond, in other words?
Yes, that's a good way to describe it, yeah.
Okay. I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. K, consider the surplus of two deals from the sheriff's office to be auctioned on good deals. Be a twenty-eighteen GMC Sierra S15 fifteen-hundred pickup, VIN number described, a twenty-eighteen GMC Sierra pickup, VIN number described. Make motion to approve out of K.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pased. L, consider the surplus of the blow items from the OHV part to be auctioned on good deals.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of L.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. M, consider the surplus of twenty-thirteen Polaris Ranger four-by-four, VIN number described from Sportsman's Lake part to be auctioned on good deals. Make motion to approve out of M.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. M, consider the surplus of the blow items, parts, to be auctioned on good deals.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of M.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. O, consider the purchase of a twenty-two Ford Explorer from Stivers Ford for the Safety Department on state contract, T one ninety-one, in the amount of thirty thousand three hundred and sixty-six dollars, authorize the chairman to sign. Make motion to approve out of O.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. P, consider the purchase of a twenty-twenty Peterbilt Three Sixty-seven of Ingram Equipment Company on Sourcewell contract for the sanitation department, in the amount of one hundred and seventy-eight thousand seven hundred dollars, authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of E.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. Q, consider the purchase of seven thirty-yard containers on Sourcewell contract for the sanitation department, in the amount of forty-six thousand four hundred and three dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork. Make motion to approve out of Q.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. R, consider the purchase of eight forty-yard containers on Sourcewell contract for the sanitation department, in the amount of sixty thousand eighty dollars, and authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of R.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. S, consider the purchase of a twenty-fifteen Expert Airfront Unloader Engine from Next Train Truck Center for Sanitation Department, in the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine and twenty-three, authorize the chairman to sign. Make motion to approve out of S.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. T, approve for power work at animal shelter to be completed by Kraut and Associates, in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine, to be reimbursed by the C of Cullman from insurance proceeds.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of T.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. U, correction of item L from June the twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meeting, to read approval for grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand for the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency for twenty-two L five L grant in State Alabama Department of Public Health. Make motion to approve out of U.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pased. V, for. V, propose a plant, Pan Creek Estates in under subdivision containing 14 rocks located off of County Road 1725.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, per review by our staff, this plat does meet our current subdivision regulations. I do recommend approval of this plat.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of B. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. X, no, W, bid number 1400 for jail supplies, reject all bids.
Make motion to approve out of W to reject the bids. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. X, award bid number 1401 for metal pipe to Twin Oaks Environmental. ADCO Pipe and Supply LLC and following farms DBA Harvey. Coverage purchase will be based on vicinity and availability of materials.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve out of X. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passed. Award bid number 1402 for Agrate to Wired Grass Construction Company Incorporated Vocal Materials Company. Whittaker Contracting and CA Langford Company Incorporated. Purchase will be based on vicinity and availability of materials.
They get them all, though. Make motion. Where is the CA Langford?
Uh, Guntersville. Yeah, Guntersville.
Make motion to approve out of Y. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passed. Z, award bid number 1403 for modular steel bridge for OHV to Banner Industrial Construction Incorporated.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this was a bid that we did for the RTP grant down there. And this was the Banner met all the optimum requirements on that. And I think that if you had any specific questions, Brian, we talked about it, and I think that'll be everything that we delivered forward, came in. Everything we needed, unless Brian will say anything.
Did they have a price just on the bridge? I'm just curious.
I think they said they had two bridges. They had a price for each, it was a 14-foot
Big section.
14-foot wide and a 24-foot wide bridge. And I don't remember the exact numbers, but there was also some options to, for them to set the, set the bridges. They could come in and do models, or already constructed, so to reduce you know, using most of our crew to actually build the superstructure or the metal part, and they can actually set them in very quickly. I believe that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of T. I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passed. Double A, award bid number 1404 for gas and diesel to B&amp;B Petroleum Products LLC.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this bid was for for mixed ethanol, 8515 can fuel instead of 100% gas. We felt like we could save some money. Right now, they're telling us that the rack price on 100% gas is about 30 cents higher than the rack price on the blend. And the bid on this was 25 cents above rack. So we were paying 5 cents above rack on the 100%, which should be on average about a 10 cent based on rack of 10 cent savings per gallon on that price. Doesn't have to do, that's a plus for it. So I do think we can save money by going with this, if it is 25 cents over the rack price for the blend instead of 100% gas.
Make motion to approve out of double A. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, passed. BB, bid number 1357, ratify extension for long year in maintenance to prolong.
With fuel prices being higher, labor costs being higher, they agreed to extend this one year. And we'll see what the fuel price is doing, possibly rebid much.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of B. Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passed. Number six, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, August 16th, 2022 at 4:00 PM in the commission meeting room. Number seven, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, August 16th, 2022 at 6:00 PM in the commission meeting room. Number eight, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make motion with, there. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Make it, yeah.